So, because we're running a little bit behind, I want to officially call the meeting to order at 7:07 PM. And there is no flag in this room, but let's pretend. And Rachel, can you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Bring one up on my bed.
That's true.
At Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Say that's one of the, one of the things I'm gonna miss about our school board meetings is the ability to recite the Pledge of Allegiance because six years ago when I joined the board, I had to remember it again for the first time. So hopefully I won't get rusty. So anyway, thanks, thanks everyone for being here and we are having our meeting tonight in a special, different location than we normally do. Because many of us, I think all the members of the board and Mark attended the Heart and Soul sort of celebration and wrap-up meeting, which I thought was excellent. It was really, for me, it hit home just in terms of how, what a difference the work has, has made, I think, in our community. And it's a little sad to think it might not continue, so hopefully they can figure out a way to keep it, keep the momentum going. Because I think it is, somebody talked about the seeds being planted. I think the seeds have been planted and hopefully they can continue to be cultivated, so. Are there any comments from the board or acknowledgements from the board at this time?
No, I just, Mark and I will continue with the school community connection group.
Right.
Out of the Heart and Soul work, so I'm sure we'll be able to keep you guys informed on how that's going. But hopefully do the very thing that I think is a value of our board, that is also sometimes the hard thing to do is to engage the community on a more regular basis and a very deliberate basis in the work of the schools and the opportunities for kids to engage themselves in the community.
Yeah, yeah, they had some great tips for engagement. So I was like, ooh, that seems.
I was reading security.
Yeah, we could learn a lot from them, I think. They did a good job in convening lots of conversations. Any other acknowledgements?
I, just in terms of speaking of community, I just want to acknowledge the number of students that were represented from Essex and the district's music festival, which was a fabulous event. I mean, just the amazing talent these kids have. It was wonderful to see it all come together. And they put a lot of work into it, so I think it's not only our town kids, but the kids from those like twelve school districts that participated, so that was fabulous.
Do you have a sense of how many there were from our school? There were four choir, and I don't know about the bands and.
I don't know, Bob Stone would probably have the duffel bag or.
Elizabeth Skinner organized the orchestra.
Yeah, Elizabeth Skinner was in charge of the orchestra.
So we get the door.
The organization, so.
We, I made a, went to the orchestral concert last Thursday night and the feedback to Elizabeth from those who've been in attendance before said it was probably the best setting orchestra that Bob Stone, who's been there for some time, has ever heard. So it's just wonderful and I would agree. It's not always the top bill compared to the big brass section in the back of the band. We looked at it incredibly great, John. Yeah, it was nice.
Anything else? I'd be remiss not to encourage board members to eat. I don't want you to get faint. So Mark was gracious enough to bring some food, so help yourself and just hide, you know, from the camera. Jack, I don't know if you have any comment you'd like to make?
I did, I'm here tonight as a, as a visitor to be heard.
Excellent.
For those of you don't mean, don't know me, my name is Jack Baylandorf. I'm chairman of the U forty-six school board, the school board that has Essex High School and Center for Technology Essex. Proud to host you and the Heart and Soul of Essex meeting tonight and the Essex Town School District Board meeting. Thank you for being here. Thank you for your service. Good luck with your budgets and we all, we all.
We all need some luck.
We all, well, good work pays dividends and I'm trusting everything will go well, so. But I'm here, just another quick side comment of a parent of a, well, a parent of a former student who was involved in performing arts programs in, in the town and in the village and here in the high school who has chosen to pursue his post-secondary school major in, in theater and performing arts. I'm very glad to hear that these, that these programs are alive and well and are successful. You know, we have a Visual and Performing Arts Academy here at the high school as the students progress from the town, the village, from Westford, from any of our sending districts coming in here. It's one of the star attractions that we have to, to bring students in. And we invest in a U forty-six. We recognize the, the importance that our students gain from that. And we were proud to hear of, of these events when the orchestra or the chorus or whoever they may be, our, our visual artists as well come forward and show their work. But all that aside, none of that is why I'm here tonight. I am here tonight on behalf of the U forty-six board. The U forty-six board is comprised of three citizens from the town of Essex and three citizens from the Village of Essex Junction. We have, each, each board member serves a three-year term. And as it turns out, every year there's a representative from the town of Essex and a representative from the Village of Essex Junction who has, who go through their annual turnover. This, this year coming up in April, one of our board members from the town of Essex, Mr. Brian McLaren, is not going to be running for reelection. Brian is, Ryan is relocating from Essex into Burlington. And his term is up. In fact, he's, he's delaying his term. His move and so he can finish out his term, which happens in April. But I'm coming to let this board know that there will be a vacancy for a citizen from the town of Essex to, to come and serve on our board. I know that our superintendent, Julie DeNova, has been in contact with the Essex Town superintendent to let them know this impending vacancy. But I'd like this board to be aware of that also in case there's information of someone who may want to serve on U forty-six board or all, if, if no one steps forward, we on U forty-six will be coming to this board anyway for an appointment for someone to come and serve. So, you know, forewarned is forearmed here. And just to, to let you know, that's what's going on. But again, thank you for your service. If anyone has any questions for me, let me know and I will, I will. That's all I just wanted to say tonight.
Great, thanks, Jack. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service as well.
Yeah.
It's my pleasure.
Yeah, I can only think of one person who's gonna suddenly have a lot of free Monday nights.
I don't know who you're talking to.
We, we also lost, just a side note, the Prudential Committee, which is the, the Village K-8 School District. The chairman of that, of that school board resigned a couple of months ago and she moved into the town of Essex. So if you're looking to appoint someone, there is someone who lives in Essex who has lots of experience working in CCSU. So she'll kill me for saying that.
I was gonna say, do you know she's interested in that?
So.
Great, well, thanks, Jack. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
So we'll move on to the second item on our agenda tonight, which is the consent agenda. And I'm wondering if there is a motion?
Motion to accept the consent agenda, being that I haven't started my sandwich yet.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, there we go. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four zero. And I was just informed by Mark that item three on our agenda, which was going to be discussion about an efficiency Vermont proposal, is no longer a moot point because the funding is gone. So, so there was, there was a funding, there was a funding opportunity and apparently it has come and gone so quickly that we didn't even have a chance to discuss it, so.
Is that, that the funding's no longer available or it was a competitive thing and it's been stacked up?
I think it's no longer available. It might come back in another round, but.
So it like fell out of budget and so it's not even.
Came through my office very quickly last Tuesday, I think, by Thursday, that's.
They had revoked their plan for it or?
I didn't hear about it until Friday, then the money was dry, but I thought it'd be prudent to get it on there to talk about it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But is it an initiative that efficiency Vermont decided they weren't gonna do? Or was it one that they're done, but they only have so much money they were gonna?
I'm not sure of all the detail.
Just so that we would know to be prepared.
My former role as superintendent, I accessed the same type of resource five years ago and, yeah, so maybe it'll come around again.
And Mark, this is different from the proposal that we heard about in the fall to build a solar array.
Yeah, totally different.
And that will be coming back?
Yeah, we just got the public certificate of, what's it called?
Public Good.
Public what?
Public Good.
Yeah, Public Good.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just heard it from the owner of Encore Corporation last Thursday. So we have the document in hand. Public Service Board has approved and so we have a, that, all, the lease agreement is down with Paul Giuliani, who's the attorney. I'm using the mixture. We've already looked at it once, but I wanted to look at it again.
Sure, yeah.
So once Paul says yes, then they can start looking at procurement of materials and sites. April fourteenth is sort of the jump off time.
Oh, wow, great. And can you just quickly remind me whether or not there's Essex zoning hoops to go through as well?
All taken care of.
It's, okay, great.
We've got a letter of support from the Essex Select Board saying that excellent vision and go forward.
Great, awesome, okay. Can't wait to hear more about the official words.
It was the deer herd we were concerned about.
Well, you know.
Not the sledding.
Not the sledding.
All the deer have moved into my neighborhood. Yes.
Just, I remember from our notes, Mark and me, since we have a little time, that we wouldn't have had somewhat, somewhat in the same vein, the idea of the town plan and you shared that link with us and an opportunity to take a look at it. Do you mind just taking a second to tell us about the meeting? Because as I looked at the education part of that plan, I realized that I don't recall that I've ever perused it or, or knew that we are necessarily, I was thinking about the safe paths to and from the school and thinking about the sidewalk that was put in just a couple of years ago as opposed to like a bike path. So I was, I was wondering where we may have a role in figuring out. They've got goals around education in their town plan and what's the, you know, appropriate connection that we might make to contribute.
I thought it'd be a very good meeting, instructive meeting. I believe that both Dana Hanley and Greg Duggan, who are both there tonight, as well appreciated the opportunity to talk to the superintendent. And the town plan, I understand, needs to be revised every six years and this was last revised in two thousand eleven. I don't know if you had a chance to look at the link, but there are some assumptions in the, in the education section that probably would need to be discussed between both boards. And I think as we talked at our table tonight, Dan, and Dan reflected our thoughts clearly when you spoke publicly. But there's a lot of places where these like-minded boards touch, you know?
Right.
And I think with our, the nexus with the town plan is, is about growth. And so their phase-in policy, if you will, in terms of how many families they, in terms of development, how many can phase in over a year, you know, ostensibly is going to affect our enrollments. But because the numbers are way lower than what they ever imagined they would be, they haven't seen it as necessarily a problem because we haven't said anything. So what I addressed with them was that the elementary school in particular, although we are within the guidelines established when the building was built in terms of how many kids we're serving, we're serving a very different population of children, which requires additional types of specialized spaces. I shared the anecdote of the principal filling sandbags because water was coming through ceiling classroom doors and, and that there are some upkeep and maintenance issues that we need to seriously address. And it would be important for the boards to get together and talk about, maybe even do a field trip where the town planners can visit our schools to see what the facility looks like compared to some assumptions that were made many, many years ago. So they were, I think, really grateful to hear about as we, as, even if our numbers are static, a twenty-first century learning environment looks different than it did a decade ago. And that it would be really time maybe to pause and think about, you know, what, what might the needs be in, in the future. Their, the big buildings that have been built up near the Lang Center, I can't think of the name of the.
Those sort of apartment buildings?
The big buildings.
Yeah, yeah.
What they tell me is that the large percentage of those occupants will be seniors. And that then the remaining percentage, they didn't have the numbers for me, would be single and two-person apartments. And so they weren't concerned that we're gonna see a large influx of, of young children. But again, I think having, as stated in this section in the town plan, it, it, it pretty much, it's clear that boards should be meeting periodically to talk about that. And, and because we haven't really talked about it, they have assumed that things are fine.
Right.
So class sizes are high in our schools and I can tell you just in talking to the principal of the elementary school today, you know, if we were to get the hundred and thirty-two kindergarteners that we expect, which would, we would need one more classroom space, that will have an effect on how we've currently configured our, our classrooms. So even again, even though we have theoretically a number of classrooms because we're using space in a different way, it, you know, something to take a look at. So it was, it was a really great introduction to a, to a document that we probably should get to be more familiar with. Maybe that's a goal we set next year to do that type of work.
Well, thanks for the, that impromptu update. Appreciate it. So tonight we have three main, well, two really main agendas tonight or agenda items. The first one is to take a look at monitoring report three point four, which is superintendent performance. And that's a report that Kim has prepared. And then we're gonna continue discussion about the budget communication plan. And I've brought copies tonight to, to share with you so we can discuss the best way to communicate about the budget going forward over the next few weeks and helping to engage the community about what exactly is in the budget and why. I also want to just report that I have done my homework and I submitted today our perspective piece. Since I knew Elsie was gonna be here, that was the deadline. I was like, if I don't get this done, I'm gonna be in so much trouble with Elsie. So thanks for, some of you provided input and some feedback on how to make it a little bit more clear. And so that's been submitted and it will appear this week in this week's edition of the paper, so. And it's just interesting, and we can get into this more, you know, having conversations with a few members of the community who actually have a better understanding of the, this funding situation this year than I assume that they would. So I think we can talk a little bit more about, about the implications of that. And sort of how do we fit into this larger statewide discussion that's beginning to take place about budgets, not just in Essex, but across the state, that are dealing with really difficult budget situations, so.
It is a hot topic in my career.
I bet.
We'll have more to share after the, the V S B A board meeting on Wednesday and conference call tomorrow evening. And there's been a lot of time invested in trying to be part of this conversation because the, the sentiment across the state with the tax increases not necessarily reflecting the budget, actual budget increases.
Right.
The focus on twenty-first century world-class education from last year's agenda is demanding that things are looked at a little differently. And superintendents and school board, boards, and have been looking at it to try and be productive members of the conversation because very often at the end of the legislative session, everybody's in a panic and something gets thrown at it and some number gets thrown out or some map gets thrown out. And now we're in reaction mode and so that is a little different this year, probably a lot different this year. And so they'll be, I'll be able to provide you guys with an update on that after this week. Where we stand and likely you'll see a broader communication from V S B A on, you know, what input we've had to the process and what we see potentially coming and, you know, how we plan to continue to contribute.
Great. Excellent. So, yeah, we'll get into that in our next agenda item. So maybe first, Kim, you could walk us through the monitoring report that you prepared for tonight?
I'd be happy to. Did everybody get one? Okay. I apologize for it being so late. Something went too, too much just last week and a half, so. So last year Brendan had done this and we were all, we were in compliance on everything. And I will say that I'm not trying to be, you know, the bad guy or a harder critic than Brendan is. I think what happens in all of these is that we are learning more about being, you know, doing these monitoring reports and in the same way that when we're, you know, learning more about what indicators are right for ends monitoring, I think the more we learn, the more we know areas where we might be able to improve and we can identify those as opportunities for development for us. And so I don't think it's, I'd like to say it's not about me being harsh and I don't think it is.
Is this a disclaimer?
Kind of. Like it felt bad taking your five incompliances and saying, wow, two of these if. So.
Walk us through it.
In this monitoring report, we're looking at monitoring the superintendent's performance. And in three of the five areas, I found us to be in complete compliance. Our monitoring is simply to determine the degree by which the board policies are being met and information that doesn't do this isn't considered in monitoring information. And then number two, the board will acquire monitoring information by one or more of three methods. Internal report, in which the superintendent discloses interpretations and compliance information to the board. B, by external report, in which the external disinterested third party selected by the board assesses compliance with the board policies. Or C, by direct board inspection, in which a designated member or members of the board assess compliance with appropriate policy criteria. So in the evidence at the end, and I might as well mention it here, internal report is largely what our monitoring reports come as, whether it's dissecting kneecap results for ends policies or financial data for the financial-related policies. That's the largest part of the type of monitoring reports that we review. But external report, we had the external special education audit and we had the financial audit, which we have every year. And then board direct inspection, we attended the celebration of learning, so that falls among our evidence. And as Mark and I were talking today, I was reminded of the occasions where we've had teacher colleagues come and speak and share their process or their science experiment and what the new standards will look like. Or we also had, I'm going to forget the teacher's name, from the elementary school that came and spoke on behalf of the work she's doing with the science team of teachers across the whole district.
Carly Epstein.
Carly, thank you. Carly Epstein. So we had a few of those opportunities to, I would, I think as Mark and I were talking, that's, feels like direct inspection, the best we can get aside from sitting in those meetings. So that provided, I think, in my opinion, great insight into the work that these amazing teachers are doing on behalf of kids as a team, so. And it really spoke volumes to their professionalism and their caring concern for every kid. So those were great opportunities, Mark. Thank you.
Yes.
Number three, I say in, in the write-up on this, I find us, in every case, the board will judge the reasonableness of the superintendent's interpretation and whether data demonstrate accomplishment of the interpretation. And then number four, in every case, the standard for compliance shall be any reasonable superintendent interpretation of the board policy being monitored. The board is a final arbiter of the reasonableness, but will always judge with a reasonable person test rather than with interpretations favored by board members or by the board as a whole. So I'll take those two together. And what I wrote on this was with the qualifier in every case, that's a pretty high standard. So I find that we're in substantial compliance with those two sections. With both of these sections, I can recall occasions where we were not in complete agreement with the superintendent's interpretation and may have questioned the adequacy or validity of the data supporting the interpretation. On a couple of occasions, we tabled the reports and asked the superintendent to respond with a modified interpretation or more information. While it's within our authority to do that, we haven't always all been in agreement with the level of detail that's adequate or the interpretation that's reasonable. And my feeling here was if we should notice a pattern in certain areas that routinely require additional data, we should review the policy to see if the language requires clarification or perhaps another bowl or layer of required monitoring or reporting. We have to be certain that our expectations are clear and that our policy reflects those expectations. And I feel that as we all, board and administrators, learn more about what the appropriate or best indicators are for each of our ends policies, we may be better able to anticipate the appropriate best evidence to support the interpretations of the policy. So it's not that we can't question and Mark has been very responsive to areas, like, I think, late last spring when there was like a pretty brief ends report and then, and then Mark was perfectly fine with understanding why that wasn't enough. And there had been others that were a ton and it took us a lot to digest all of it, so.
Right.
It's been a very fluid, very respectful, very responsive back and forth. But then there are still some times where, you know, we, I think we just need to figure out if there are areas that are consistently needing more data, then we go to that or if there's areas where, if in certain conditions we're still not in compliance on something, then we do want more and that's clear. But we want to make sure that it's the will of the whole board.
Right.
And that, I don't think we need to change policy for policy's sake, but I think we want to be cognizant of areas where we might notice that, okay, if we keep coming back to this one, is it everybody's interest? And if so, then let's make sure it's part of the standards of the policy.
Right. I think that, that's a really good point. I think that what I want to be somewhat sensitive to is just, you know, making sure that we're clear with our superintendent. So if as a board, we're discussing whether or not we agree with the interpretation or whether or not we agree that all the evidence is being provided that we need to make a decision, then as a board, we need to direct Mark exactly on what we're looking for. Because I think that sometimes what's happened is, you know, Mark hears different voices at the table, but not necessarily one voice. And so I would agree with your comment about it needs to really be a unified sort of, the board is now providing Mark with a directive about what is needed just so that he doesn't have to sort of keep guessing as to what, maybe this is right, you know, coming back to us. So, you know, and hopefully, it may require us to sort of make a motion and to have a vote because there may be discrepancies about whether you feel this piece of evidence is required or whether you feel it's, it isn't required and we should have that debate amongst ourselves.
Yeah, I think it's really good to then take a vote and say, well, okay, Mark, three to two, we think you need to do more. Now you're fine.
Yeah, and I think that's, you know, and that's okay, you know, I think that that's the process. This is the work.
I would agree. That's exactly. And I think that's what I was trying to get to, like.
Yeah.
It's not, it is within our prerogative to do that and it's important that we do that because it's, we're holding the superintendent accountable to policies that, you know, stated what our community thought was important for outcomes for kids, especially in our ends policies. And so that led, having this be able to be a responsive, respectful exchange to feel as though we've got accountability to that is really important. But also making sure that we are being clear about our expectations. And so when it's either not Mark or it's not one of us, that we're not, the next person's not guessing at what is now understood to be the reasonable expectations that would prove the evidence you're looking for to say that kids are achieving. So I think that's work we can continue to just be aware of and, and notice if there are patterns. And if so, we're getting better at figuring out which ends indicators make sense under which categories. And so it might make sense at some point when those are really, this is what it would really look like if we were getting it for kids. We might have to think about whether or not that becomes the next tier so that the next person knows what they're looking for and why that's a valid indicator of success and, you know.
And as we've learned, I'm sorry, as we've learned through this, through discussion is that sometimes building the systems to collect the data that we want takes time. And so maybe a good exercise would be during, during a retreat for the board to review, you know, what were the sort of pressure points around evidence over the past year? And can we have a conversation with the superintendent about developing better, you know, or different evidence that would, that would prevent sort of a, one of those like screeching halt moments during a deliberation around a monitoring report. so that there's time to build up and build in maybe brand new um monitoring or or systems reporting.
Listen, that also goes back to, so this is one thing that would have been helpful for me again, going back, is even knowing, like, I don't have access to a lot of the monitoring parts because it seemed like with a lot of them not necessarily being hard copy last year. So I don't know even what was the last year's. Um, and so I know, I think as we've discussed before about having noted in the monitoring report what the data is before and and I think we talked about having it be something that we have to do prior to the meeting is look back on the year prior to see, because if we've asked Mark to do X, Y, and Z last year and that was okay, part of me thinks if he's using the same, if if you're basing it on that, you would expect X, Y, and Z to also give you the same thing. And if we have a difference with that, we should be discussing it prior to the monitoring report instead of once he's there and prepared to.
Right.
Because that may be information that he has, just he didn't know we were gonna ask for that. And so I, I think it goes back to one, what are, do we have like certain data that we feel are important? And should that have its own place at the top of the monitor, but these are the data that we've identified? Doesn't mean that's always set in stone, but then also this was what we accepted last year.
Yeah, I mean, it might be a good thing to return to. I think part of what it was is we developed a certain comfort level. And when we first adopted policy governance, we would have conversations before the next monitoring report about, okay, guys, what are the expectations, you know? Here's what I'm gonna do. Does it sound like the right, you know, that was, and those were really helpful. But once we sort of locked those in, we never went back to sort of having that pre-conversation about the next report. And I know sometimes it's hard for us to even focus of the, focus on the reports that are at hand. Um, but that might be useful, especially if, as new members come on, that might be a really useful conversation for, for new and existing members.
I think also Rachel brought a really good point. I I think having the old monitoring report is probably adequate. But you don't have the old monitoring report. You don't have access to a lot of them. And so I think.
I will, starting in April, end of April, but.
But but someone else won't. You know, there's gonna be a new person who won't have that.
Yeah.
So.
So the very first part of a new orientation package should be hard copies of every single monitoring report from the year before.
That would be great. That, that again, you know, goes back to, and then you guys, uh, those of us on the board already have that. And so I, I just wonder if that would help with the continuity and help us stop having those stopgap at the main.
I think too, and actually, Mark, I might be wrong, but I think we had at one point had the intention that the most current monitoring report would be up at the website under the policy. And I think there are some there, cause I know I've gone back, I think last year actually, when I went through um the monitoring reports when I was doing our breakout for the um year evaluation last year, evaluating vis a vis the monitoring reports, some of them were there and some of them weren't. So maybe that's something now that we've done some work on our website, we could just make sure.
I think if you go there, you'll find we're all up to date. I mean, that was part of the transition. Yeah.
Yeah.
I would, if we can just double check that, that, but uh um, more important to our process would be, we might be able to add that to the end of the agenda so that we look at what's coming up for monitoring reports. And maybe we've taken a look at what's coming up. Everybody take a quick look through the last one.
Yeah.
Do you expect a different interpretation, Mark? Do we expect that there might have been? It almost as importantly, what were the next steps for, because we recognize that in a lot of these policies, there's gonna be areas we're not in compliance, cause we just aren't. And that hasn't meant um, you've been able to explain what you were going to do to come into compliance. And so maybe that's a good way for us to circle back before you come back with the next round on that monitoring report. To say, okay, you know, these are the areas we weren't there, or maybe there's some glaring area we thought we needed more information and we agree as a whole board that we do. And so is that data you have, Mark? It wouldn't have to consume a half an hour, but it might, if we came prepared, be able to consume ten minutes. It saves you a lot of time later.
Yeah, I I think we, a good step would be, maybe it is a retreat. But I I I ran by the board very quickly back in August when we were saying mikes together, this draft ends indicator system, which we, several superintendents, we worked Brent Kay from OR Southwest, sort of got thinking about it and he's, has way more experience than most of us do. But we kind of glossed over that. And since that, that in, that introduction of the concept of an end syndicator system, I've done some, some revisiting that document to make it a little bit, you know, more user friendly. But maybe we spend some time just actually talking about what that system looks like. Because here's the, here's the, what's going on, that um, we've had some great longitudinal data. We had the new standards reference exam until two thousand one, then New England Common Assessment Program came in, now that's gone. Um, and now we've got Sback coming in. So we've got, you know, we've got data that's no longer longitudinal, which is per, I'm happy for Sback coming in, but it's, it's going to be somewhat disruptive to what we've considered to be a true indicator of student success. One example, middle school's going from a grade-based reporting system to a standards-based report system. Huge change. Um, uh, having sat with a number of educators down in in Berlin two Fridays ago and have them puzzle over, what is a three?
Right.
It's, it, there's, it's formidable and because that's a new way of thinking about student work. We have personal learning plans. I'm not suggesting that personal learning can become an indicator of student success, but I think that I want to monitor that. So it's not just pro forma kid has a plan, you know.
Right.
But it really does, it's re- relevant and meaningful to child and it's, and it's student centered. Um, that's why I'm really excited about this, that this meeting tonight, because there could be some great opportunities for kids in the future, I think. So I guess my point is that it's changing. Um, and so I think it's important to go back and look at old monitoring reports. But if I stack up the last four, if I include Fitzy's monitoring report from June of two thousand ten, every year it's a little bit different because it's changing.
Yeah.
So I I think looking at the big system and having that discussion and triangulation is really important cause it's not just one set of internal reports. I think direct inspection, I really want to ramp that up next year so the board can have actual hands-on experience like we did two Aprils ago of two thousand twelve, really seeing what kids are doing. And external reports, it's a time to bring in someone in to sort of review, you know what I mean? I mean, it gets so cloistered, it gets so sort of small when I look at it myself. So looking at other ways of bringing that forward would be important. But it's changing. I mean, the whole landscape of student assessment uh is huge. And Sback is all student centered, computer adapted, based on where every individual child is. And I've got Michael Hawke, the Director of Standards and Assessment, coming in to visit with the board on the twenty-fourth of March. I'm gonna get to that. Um, as a way to give you some background of here comes Sback, it's fascinating. But again, it's a very different, rather than looking at a cohort, it's looking at individual kids. How does that affect monitoring? You know?
Right, right, yeah. Interesting.
We'll expect for each child.
Yeah.
Isn't that beginning into the means though?
You know what I mean? It's.
Yeah.
It's a big head hurting sort of thing.
Oh, yeah.
The um, I know the secretary is very interested in, the new secretary of education, very interested in having a common way to gather data to be able to, that isn't just about a single score, to be able to show student achievement in a consistent way across the state so that you can look at efficiencies and um gaining some knowledge from that. And that is, I've, every time I've heard her speak, and it's been many times, that is among her areas. To be able to see that come to fruition, that a student is not a single scorer and there are things that, you know, can indicate they're getting it. Um, so I don't know that that's necessarily gonna come from Montpelier to us, but we're gonna need to be prepared that we're reporting out a little differently, I think, in the advent of that, whenever it comes to be. And I have a sense for as many times as I've heard her say it, that somewhere there'll be resources for her to get to that. A common chart of accounts or whatever, someplace putting the money with student outcomes that isn't just about a single grade. And the student experience is what I'm sensing from her commentary as well. Um, so that there's a way to compare, whether it's a tiny school in southern Vermont or central Vermont or the northeast kingdom or a larger school in Essex or Burlington, some way to have a sense of our kids getting an equitable experience. It's not gonna be exactly the same, but that, so this is, this very conversation is happening with superintendents, with the secretary of education, um, and ultimately as they're looking to see boards find ways to provide outcomes for kids in the most efficient means. It's going to be discussed everywhere.
Right.
So um.
Okay.
So anyway, sorry, um, to digress.
No, that's good.
But I think, um, so I think that's where I had us in substantial compliance, because I think that's an area that we'll wanna keep an eye on. And um, this, in policy governance, Brendan and I grappled with this a little bit last year to figure out how to provide Mark with feedback, um qualitative aspects of his job. And so to that, um, last year, we, we, you know, had an opportunity in the executive session to discuss and Brendan and I tried to dissect and and distill and and share that feedback with Mark. And um, I also did more of an analysis of all the monitoring reports, which was a little bit easier, but put it in a table and it was easy to sort of look back at the whole year worth of monitoring reports and where maybe we circled back or weren't in compliance, but this is what the plan is and and how we did on those things. So in that, um, an area that came up last year, I think, is a possible area to make that more structured. And Mark and I talked about it today, was the idea of having that qualitative part of his evaluation reflect something that is on paper. And to that end, we thought maybe the superintendent job description. And so that is what I suggest here, that with respect to the formal evaluation of the superintendent's performance for the year, the review was conducted last spring twenty thirteen. The evaluation included an analysis of all monitoring reports for the year, along with a qualitative review from the board compiled by the chair and vice chair. The board is required to conduct its next formal evaluation before the end of March twenty fourteen. And Brendan promised we will do it before he leaves. I didn't write that, but consider it written. It's happening before Brendan's done with us. Um, it would be my recommendation that we use the superintendent job description to guide the qualitative portion of the superintendent evaluation in addition to providing an analysis of the year's worth of monitoring reports. This would provide a clear basis for the qualitative expectations of the superintendent and help to guide the board review around those expectations. It would, it would guide our conversation. Um, so Mark gave, sent me a copy um of the job description and I printed out one and we could, you know, make it something we take a look at and make sure that that job description would give us enough of foundation. Is it really what you have to do, Mark, for your job? Cause I know it's the job description that was drafted when we were hiring. Um, and so I don't know that this board has looked at it anytime since then and I barely remember it and I was on the hiring committee cause we put it together in two thousand nine. So.
Right.
Um, I think it would be worth looking back at it, having a meaningful conversation with Mark and seeing if that is descriptive enough to have him know what we would be talking about in the executive session around his qualitative features of leadership in our district. Or if that needs some tweaking, or if maybe that isn't fully describing those other pieces of his job. So I, I would like to see us use that as a starting point for a somewhat quick turnaround and what we think of that as a tool. And then, and then almost so that we could have something, notes that we've written that maybe take those characteristics and have people evaluate it so that when we sit in executive session, we can talk based on some components. So um, there, Barry uses a tool where they take those qualitative um features that are in the job description and they use like a one to four scale and then the comments section just to guide their conversation. And then somebody compiles that and it becomes part of the evaluation. So here I said for recommended action items, do we have the right indicators to measure the qualitative aspects of leadership? Review the job description to assure appropriate for qualitative evaluations. I think, think that needs to be done.
Okay.
Um, do we seek additional input to the superintendent evaluation? Do we want to consider the idea of a three sixty review? Um, do we want to do the same regarding our performance as we think about it? And is there a way to do that on a feedback tool, whether it's like a, I don't really know, maybe it'd be a, put a quicker question survey up there around the areas that we have to evaluate ourselves for the year, or maybe it's district climate or, you know, something. I think we keep having this conversation around feedback opportunities regarding the work in our district. And a couple of the areas we have control over is our own performance and Mark's performance. And so maybe there's opportunity not, you know, just to gather that because Mark reports to us and he leads many.
Mm-hmm.
So I think that would be an area for consideration, not to, not for bashing or, you know, I would not expect it to be that. But I would like us to consider that possibility as having more information in the process.
And I think that if we were to incorporate some aspect of three sixty, which would automatically, in my mind, that means more people weighing in. I think we would need to make sure that we define as a board what role that information will play in the evaluation.
Absolutely. Cause I would think it would speak to only certain components of it. I mean, Mark's responsiveness to us is one component of his work. Mark's leadership to his leadership teams another, his availability to community members through, you know, roundtable. You know, there are pieces of that job that um others may have more exposure to than we do.
Right.
That are, you know, things that marked as well. And as much as anything in all of these things, I think we have a very fortunate situation with the board that works well with the superintendent, who we respect and have a, a great dialogue with. And you know, one day there won't be all of us sitting here, one day Mark won't be sitting there, you know, figure out a process that um, you know, has the opportunity to codify.
Mm-hmm.
The good work.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so I'd like to think about that idea.
Yeah.
But I don't think it, it's not like a free for all. It would be some pretty pointed questions around things we wouldn't otherwise be able to.
Right.
Know ourselves.
Yes. And I think that reviewing the job description and thinking about the evaluation that we would, that we're, that we'll prepare before the end of March um, might, might, might sort of bring to light some of those things that like, well, I'm not really sure how we would grade.
Yeah.
Mark on this particular attribute or whatever. Um, because our primary relationship is superintendent board.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but his job description obviously encompasses much more than just uh dealing with the board.
And so very much of Mike's strength. And it's not that s- those qualitative features don't um present themselves in ways that show up with, I don't know, like keeping board informed, like you're meeting with the um select board folks or the town plan people. I mean, that, I'm not sure exactly where that goes. That's really something you chose to take on that is important and shouldn't be lost in an evaluation cause it doesn't show up in a monitoring report, because that is a really valuable piece of the work that you do when you're out there in front of things for the community. And so, you know, I'd like for us to make sure that those values show up in the job description, that they um make sense as part of the work you're doing, that they're not adding something else, but it's just really putting a structure to what's already happening so that that can lead our conversation when we're looking at the qualitative parts of the job.
Right.
Um, in our executive session and trying to distill that so that we provide something meaningful to Mark.
Right.
Does that?
Mm-hmm. No, I think.
Seem that.
I think a review of the job description would be kind of fun.
I think so too.
I'm assuming you have an opinion about it.
I'd be like, this is all I said I do in two thousand ten. What the heck?
This is very, if, as far as job descriptions go, this is very PG-like.
Yes.
Cause you, you distill, I mean, I think when I applied for the job in two thousand ten, it was four pages long. I mean, it was a long, it was long. So this is a nice distillation of. I still don't know what some of it, I don't know what it all means.
There in lies the problem. I thought that when you sent it to me, Mark. That's why I put in here that I think that we need to look at it collectively, whomever wants to take that on with you.
Yeah.
Um, to make sure that it actually makes sense. That's what hap- that's the first thing that struck me really better.
What I resonate to with heart and soul is this notion of values, you know, because they're very enduring and they're cross-cutting across all like-minded boards and neighborhoods, whether you're in the junction or the town. And not that I put heart and soul language in here, but one of the items on the job script, I'm sorry, you guys, you don't have a copy, is that, that meet the community needs. Well, what is that, what is meeting the community needs? But I think aligning my work with the vision of the Essex community based on the values of, it's that type of language that I think would be helped to, helpful to really, you know, allow me to think more deeply about, rather than just seeing a checklist, yeah, do that, that and that.
Right.
You know, values is a very different way to approach your work, you know?
I have one copy too. My printer was running out of ink. So I was like, you guys, just click this for fun. And then the last thing um that I noted on here, recommended action items, do individual board members provide helpful feedback on superintendent performance throughout the year? And then the last thing, um, that I noted on here, recommended action items, do individual board members provide helpful feedback on superintendent performance throughout the year? The, our, our monitoring report feedback, which we keep trying to do well for you, Mark, so hopefully
Oh, it's always helpful, yeah.
You know, uh, to the extent we think to do it awesome, to the extent we figure out ways that we can
Mm-hmm.
get that feedback to you in a way that you have it without adding maybe an extra step in it. So I think we should continue to think about the process that gets you the most information, that's meaningful to you and doing it the next time around.
Right.
And makes it as easy as possible for us to actually do it because it's the last thing that usually comes up.
Yeah.
And so it tends to not necessarily
Well, and it's, you know, and I think a lot of what we end up doing is that I think we can come to the table with some ideas in mind, but often what happens is it's the discussion among the board members that that, you start to flesh out some of the, the feedback. And so,
Yeah. It prompts flesh.
Um, when I typically get some of those, those template forms back, it's just sort of yep, 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 and good, 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 good. And not really enough to, to give Mark any help really in giving him something constructive.
Right. Yeah.
Um, I think mostly that comes to, to the forefront when we talk about it in, in, during the course of a meeting.
Yeah. Maybe we like do a, one of those things you do when you're having a good parent moment before you go to bed. What were your two favorite things of the day? What were the, you know, two things you wished you did do, you know, whatever, like maybe,
Right.
maybe we frame it in that way if that's more meaningful. What were the two highlights? What are your biggest takeaways from the report? What are your, you know?
Hmm.
We're all doing that well sometimes, aren't we? So, you know, and it, that'd be helpful to figure out from you, Mark, what would be meaningful in feedback, um, if, I agree, cause when it's our conversation, and Mark always takes a ton of notes on it.
Right.
Is much richer than when I fill out that form, unless there's something big that was either glaringly missing or was a huge, ooh.
Yeah. Right. Yeah.
Well, that's an, that's an interesting thought, play around, break something back, sort of like, what are some several essential questions that you need to ask as a board before you say goodnight?
Uh-huh.
Right. And when the board, when the meeting ends. And maybe getting off the formality of the, the matrix, you know, the table and just have more sort of a
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know, kind of a
Yeah. And maybe we like capture it in a quick notes, note shoots to everybody or, you know,
Yeah, okay, good.
that we have the technology to probably do that.
A voting keypad.
Keep that thing.
Whatever they're talking about.
A scale one to five. As long as it's anonymous.
Four out of five of us really like it.
Oh, you can jump it up on the screen.
Uh, yeah.
Maybe more people have come to our meeting.
With more game show.
We're definitely giving Elsie a clicker.
Well, any other, um, questions or feedback or anything else you wanna add?
A, a modest comment. Um, I, I don't disagree with what you've said and the things that I think we should do better. But I do think in reading three and four, um, you say, geez, we're in substantial compliance because, you know, there are times where, um, we've tabled reports asking for more information. I don't read, for instance, number three. I don't read, in every case, the board will agree with the interpretation.
Nope, absolutely. I
But we will judge based on the interpretation.
Yep.
Right.
And I personally think we do.
Mm-hmm.
You know, i- if, if we, if we said, oh, I don't like this monitoring report because you wore an ugly tie this time, okay. That's not based on the reasonable list.
Which is not the case.
Not to that, you're a beautiful
Yeah.
You know, we, I, I do feel like we always judge on the reasonableness of the superintendent's interpretation. Sometimes we disagree with the superintendent.
Right.
Right.
But that doesn't put us out of compliance. That just means, hmm, we, and maybe we can then try to be, make it work better because we go,
Right.
wow, we disagreed with him on this. Let's make sure we all agree before the monitoring report is done next time.
Yeah, yeah, I agree with you, Dan. I think that, you know, we could, um, I guess I would be a little bit more, uh, I, I would side with you more strongly if, if Kim had come in and said, you know, we're not in compliance.
Yeah.
Um, but I, in, in, in illuminating the two issues that she's really brought to the table tonight, I think those are probably the most
Yeah.
appropriate, you know?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not saying we need to change this to in compliance. I was saying, but
And I think my intent there
Yeah.
No, no.
Right.
And you know what? I, I think, um, I, my sentence in there to that point was with, it's definitely within our authority to do that. And we should do it whenever we feel like it's not the right interpretation.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Yeah.
And Mark should be willing to be responsive to that. And we should be doing that collectively. But I think to Brendan's point, there are times where we've not necessarily provided clear guidance on whether it's something all of us need or which part of this didn't we agree with and, and, um, do we have a collective voice on whether or not the interpretation was right, or a collective voice on whether or not there's more data needed. And so I, I could even, and I almost, as I was doing the final on this, left three in compliance. The in every case qualifier is such a high standard.
Oh, it is.
That it was really not impossible to pick up an occasion where we sort of in retrospect, I thought, hmm, I'm not sure that it's not that we can't, we should. And we really, I don't even have a problem with us ever tabling something until we, this is our job. This is our job to make sure that we're holding the superintendent and our district accountable outcomes for kids, or especially on those ends. And other things too, if, if we don't feel like we have the data we need and whether it's executive limitations or ends. Um, so that standard was really high.
Yeah, I, I agree with you. Yeah, I agree with you. Yeah, I mean, yeah, whenever you take a, uh, to a false test, if it's always you check false, you know, it's, it's just, it's what you do.
I know. So, but I did, it's, and so I wanted to, in writing it up, make sure it's definitely within our authority to do that. But I'm not always sure that we were like, we all in agreement with what either level of information we needed or the clarity on the interpretation. And that's where I thought, if we notice that that's always the case, then we wanna look at whether or not the policy language is clear. And if it's not clear, because there's definitely a requirement that this be in the monitoring report. Whatever we put in policy, we have to be willing to monitor. So we better be pretty darn sure
Yeah.
that that is the stuff we always want monitored.
And ultimately, you are, you are, um, your ultimate, although I don't see it here, you are, your assessment is that we are in compliance with this policy.
Um, three out of the five areas, and two of them were in substantial compliance.
Right.
Yeah.
So, and, and what's I think really appropriate is that these action items about, you know, indicators for qualitative aspects of leadership and the, the questions about, do we need more input on superintendent evaluation and should we review the job description? Those are all perfect for right now because the evaluation is coming up. Um, one of the things that I think as a board, um, and maybe the chair has not done great, is to make sure that the, these action items that come have more often been coming as part of these monitoring reports, are they being acted upon? And how, what is the status and who owns those? I think that's part of the, the monitoring in general, uh, that the board can get better at is when action items do, uh, result, then what is the plan for actually acting upon those action items and getting those things?
Yes.
So that the next time you end up monitoring the support, things have been done to improve.
And it's exactly what we do to Mark when we monitor him.
Right.
As a matter of fact, when we do his evaluation, that's exactly what I do when I go back through all the monitoring documents to see where we are.
Right.
This is what the follow-up was gonna be. How do we stand on that? Have we circled back to it?
Right.
And that's the standard. I think we need to do our best to hold ourselves to the standard that we would feel comfortable accepting from Mark. And so
Yeah, agreed.
Um, so, in that light, maybe we should assign who wants to work with Mark on his job description. Or we should maybe accept this monitoring report first and then decide if you wanna do it.
I think we should accept this monitoring report.
Okay.
I had it as an action step.
Yeah, and I think that, um, the action steps are probably things that you and I can work on as we work on the evaluation for Mark.
Perfect. If that, is that okay with you guys? Brendan and I work with Mark and, and then we'll get the evaluation, or the job description to the whole group to take a look at.
Yes, yeah.
That's fair. Yeah, I like work with Mark rather than work on Mark, so I'm
There's, that's a long list.
We will work on the superintendent evaluation. We will work with Mark on it.
That sounds great. So, uh, is there a motion?
Well, I was just gonna say, one, one just little, and it's not super important in any way, but just
Yes.
looking at the action items based on the three and four, they don't necessarily really match up. And so the only thing I had was, I am perfectly happy within substantial compliance. But if we are gonna have an action item, maybe we should think about, well, is there something we would do in this around those that would help us become in compliance?
And you know what? The thing I suggested was that we look to see if there's any, um, any need for policy change in terms of the language being more clear, but I didn't put it as an action item at the end.
So, if there's a question of reasonable, do we make sure we hold a vote among the board members to see if that is?
But in that little write-up, we could do that. That's a great idea. Do we agree on the reason? So that
Yeah.
That'd be a good, that'd be a perfect additional action item.
A friendly amendment?
So what's the, uh, I'm sorry, what is the additional action?
If there's a question of
The interpretation?
Of consistency among our interpretation, we hold a vote on saying this is the interpretation or this is the data that we need.
Oh.
So that, so the, so the
So process, so we
So the, the board tells Mark
Right.
this is what we need as opposed to Rachel or Dan or Dave saying
Right, when there's a disagreement about interpretation or evidence, then the board speaks with one voice to instruct Mark on what is needed to bring our
So if question of interpretation or adequacy of evidence, board will vote to provide direction to superintendent?
Yes.
And that's just good governance.
Yeah.
Is that coming through as a friendly amendment?
Yes.
Yeah.
And I will resend it because I have no wifi here, so.
So is there a motion now?
I motion that we accept the report as amended.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries four zero. Monitoring report is accepted.
Can you give the password?
I don't have the password.
It's wifi at CCSU.
Oh.
It didn't work for me.
Didn't work?
The word at or the sign?
And is it guest or wifi?
The guest, it's guest, the guest, then it's wifi at CCSU is the, that's what I said, I don't know.
She's the guest one.
Is the at sign, or is it the word at?
Okay.
At's at sign.
Let's see.
So, um,
Trying to connect. Not especially successfully, but we'll see.
So the next item on our agenda tonight is to discuss the budget, uh, communication plan. And so what I have here is, uh, a draft, uh, communication timeline. Uh, very similar to the one that we designed last year, and I actually used it, uh, the FY fourteen one as a building block. To build from. So what I've tried to capture here is some of the, uh, regular things that we have done in the past. Um, but it also, oh, we can share one. We can share one. I didn't bring enough copies. So what I tried to do is I left some of the, um, the ones that we've traditionally done, like tabling and um, the budget flyer, although we need to sort of lock down the timeline for that. But this is sort of a week by week to-do list of different communication activities uh, to engage the public and to sort of educate the public about what the budget proposal contains and, uh, why we hope they support it. So, um, and I also tried to plug in our, our meeting dates as I know them currently. Um, so the Feb ten meeting tonight, the March ten meeting, and the March twenty fourth meeting. Um, but I don't, we, our next item is to talk about whether or not we need another meeting this month. So I'll just quickly run through it because you haven't had time to look at it. But, um, so this week, um, thanks to our partnership, uh, with the Essex Reporter, our perspective piece will appear. Uh, there was also just a really good news article last week about, uh, on the front page of the Essex Reporter about the budget conversation and what the impact will be. Um, so, uh, and then also, w- what I always do this time of year is sort of ramp up postings to our Facebook page. So, um, like providing a link to our, our presentation, uh, on the website or a link to, uh, like, for example, I posted, uh, last week about the board position, uh, openings. And, uh, tonight I, today I posted about the location of this meeting. Uh, so we can do more of that. Uh, one thing I always do as well is after the, uh, Essex Reporter runs our perspective piece, I also post it to the Facebook as well, so that people can see the copy. Um, also in February, uh, we had talked last meeting also about reaching out to the PTO and talking about what kind of, you know, partnership or, or collaborative events we might do to get the word out, especially to, uh, families of students. Um, and figure out what to, you know, how we can work together. Uh, and then I also wanna make sure that we get from Mark and his team the timeline for the annual report and the budget flyer so that we can sort of, uh, make sure we meet our deadlines for those publications, but also know when they're gonna hit um, during the course of the next six weeks.
Yeah, you're right, and the range runs to the seventeenth to the twenty fourth. It's right about, we don't wanna send the flyer out too early because it
Right.
um, so towards the latter part of March, but the, by statute, the report has to be in, the budget needs to be in the hands of voters no less than ten days before the vote. And we typically get it a couple of weeks before, so the twenty fourth, we're right in that.
That zone.
That, right in that zone, yeah.
So is that for the annual report?
Annual report.
Yeah.
And the pl- probably the flyer, because the flyer references the annual report online, so it
Right.
So the report's probably gonna go out and then the flyer will, will follow it.
And in terms of our writing responsibility and
Yeah, you should.
Did we have a, a little blurb that was drawn from the full page board?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, the board had more than, it was a blur plus.
No, we had a full page thing in there, but the, the flyer, did we have a little
Yeah, there's a little
Okay, dense thing.
Thing that was excerpted from that, right?
Yeah. Yeah, and it's very brief and we could, we could send that to whoever wants to write the piece, but
He's gonna do a song song.
Yeah.
Just pile it on. So
Yeah, he feels guilty.
Yes, I do, increasingly. So, um, now, we have winter recess, uh, school's out the week of the twenty fourth, back, uh, March third, week of March third. I wonder if we should revive our tabletop display, um,
You can put me down for that.
Okay, I think that'd be great. And then we need to sort of talk about how to deploy it at different, uh, places.
I have an idea there.
Yes.
Why we're on that thing. Just gonna say, if it was a little earlier, the winter festival, the whole Essex Town, Essex Junction Winter Festival.
What is that, what are the dates for that?
Is, mm, the first Saturday of March, is it? There, it's usually the Saturday at the end of winter break. Is usually. And I just thought, in looking at this, that may be an opportunity, at least have it.
It would be twenty one.
Have information out there to be the, yeah, I
Is there a location for that?
Why am I not, this is not
Okay, is it at the, uh, SH junct- I think it's ADL this year, isn't it? I've got it on here.
Hold on to outdoor games, right, or?
Yes, it's, it's a community event. Um, yeah, 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 yeah. I'm still learning how to use this here.
Did you get in?
No, but after you do.
Okay, we just got
Here you go.
Um, I've got the date on here somewhere. Don't worry about it. The other thing I thought is if we had a few questions that we wanted feedback on, it'd be cool, and it might draw attention to the thing if we had, um, uh, you know how we were talking about exit into, exit survey?
Mm-hmm.
Survey, yeah.
And computer setup for that. If we had, if some of those questions were questions that were not only about budget, or if, even if it were the same questions actually.
Mm-hmm. Right.
Could we set one of those up with the budget board thing? And ask people, invite for people's feedback on the same questions that they might otherwise complete at vote time.
I would think so. Are you thinking setting up as an electronic survey that people could take?
Yeah.
Yeah? I think that makes a lot of sense.
Yeah. They'd be curious about what's going on with the computer or, you know.
March first, at EMS first, anything like that, yeah.
I just found that Um
At EMS?
Yep, it's, yeah, this year.
And it would probably be able to be the same set of questions.
Get one last
If, if we were gonna do an exit survey.
Yeah, so maybe, um, maybe this week of March third, we launch the survey. So somebody could, as homework, could take, um, taking a look at what we've done in the past for those exit surveys and coming up with either, yes, let's do these again, or let's add some others or whatever, so, so
What else do we wanna do?
Yeah, so maybe for that week of March third, a couple of folks could, could send it around, well, here's what we think we should do for the questions for the survey. And then we can talk about, do we wanna make it available prior to the vote and after the vote, that kind of thing.
Someone's gonna have a copy of that elec- that survey in what kind of form? Make it a lot easier to edit it.
Is it something where we've ever collected the emails? Or collected emails to try and include them in more direct, you know, like, one of the big things that came up was the personalization. And if we had more emails and were able to go more personal versus them looking for us?
Yeah.
Is that a possibility? And one, second thing is could be, who would maintain that, but
Right. One of the things that, one of the things that the board could decide to initiate is, um, to create an email list.
Um
So as you're doing the survey, maybe even on the website in general, you know, do you wanna stay up to date with happenings from the school board? Sign up here to receive a, you know, semi-regular e, uh, e-update from the school board. I mean, that, outside of alert now, that might be a way for people who are directly interested in hearing from the school board, is to create your own mailing list of, of email addresses.
And that might get outside of just the parent group.
Okay.
Right.
As being a possibility. It's a big undertaking, but there are different tools out there that might
Right.
be helpful in that.
Yeah, but I mean, that would, if you, you could obviously collect them if you have an electronic survey, but if you also ask for them on the printed survey, But if you also ask for them on the printed survey, somebody has to then enter them in and so
It's a lot of work.
It's a lot of work if if the.
We need to figure out if it will be used.
Right.
Um.
So.
And maybe that'd be the thing. If we were to create an email list, would that be something that interests you? If majority of people say nah, no. I mean that could be its own survey item to see if it is something that people would like that sort of updating. Cause just as we're thinking about the cost of mailings and and those sorts of things, I mean we'll always have that but it might just be another avenue. I don't know.
Also, I mean, the Heart and Soul has quite a database now and I don't know if it's kosher to approach them and think about.
Yeah.
Can we, cause Heart and Soul is well known now.
Yep.
And we always get little invites and alerts from them and maybe that's another thing we can think about in the future to how to keep the momentum going. One of the questions tonight is can we use the the Heart and Soul website as a way of announcing and inviting input to the different things that these these community boards are doing.
Um should that, when that comes to be, will be awesome. I really think if that is populated and maintained.
That's the challenge.
It will be, it is the challenge, but i- if it were to be, it becomes the source.
Well, it becomes that critical mass thing like so if enough people start posting to it and enough people start accessing it, all of a sudden it becomes the resource and then it's not are people updating, it's like people like I need to get my event on the calendar.
Except and then maybe from there you have links to, you know, school board meeting, here's a link to their agenda and so that can be a whole massive tool itself.
So I'll share the the Google Doc with you, which is the s- the last survey I'll send over to all five of you.
That's fine, yeah. And then we can talk uh about who might be willing to take on that particular task. But just to uh finish up here through the through the overview, um we have our school board meeting on the tenth of March. Uh also talked about do we wanna ta- tabletop uh display at PTO events. Um week of March seventeenth, that's I guess not when the budget flyer is gonna be mailed. So now we have nothing happening the week of March seventeenth, so love to think about that.
And Patrick's Day.
Yeah. We'll have a discussion over at Cody's.
Tabletop at Cody's.
I tell you, we get a turnout. Uh and I'm sure they love the business. So um school board meeting on the twenty fourth. Um and continuing uh to promote, uh oh yeah, that's when we go into promotional mode for the informational meeting. So using all of our regular avenues, Front Porch Forum, Facebook, Essex Reporter and the Essex uh Town District website to promote the informational budget meeting. Um maybe there's an opportunity to get one more perspective piece in uh be between now and the vote, I would hope so. Maybe there's a chance for someone new to take a stab at that. Um the other thing I wanted to go back to because we mentioned at the last meeting was whether or not we wanna try to encourage members of the community to write letters to the editor to support or to just express their opinion about the budget. Um so that might be something we wanna think about. Um even if it's one letter a week, um that showed up um expressing an opinion about the budget, um that might be helpful. Um so to encourage that in some way, shape or form, you know, people say, well, what can I do? Well, you could write a letter to the editor, you know, you could take a few minutes just to jot down your thoughts about the budget. Um.
So just to hang off what I think the theme of tonight's Heart and Soul meeting was all about, uh i- if if there was an interest on the part of the board to write another letter to try to get it in. What do you think about the merits of co-authoring of of something like Jack Ellendorf from U forty six but as chairs of respective boards who have the same goals in mind for kids? Maybe not getting into the specificity of the percentages but just that as a, one of the values that we hold. We are writing to you as board chairs to please get out and vote um type of thing. I think it sends a strong message that you're on the same page, which you are.
I don't know, um it'd be easy to reckon back to it being one of the most um mentioned values in the Heart and Soul work and
Right.
We continue efforts in connecting with community, you know, for kids and for community and that work continues, yeah.
We might be able to note, I mean, we don't have written here as the thirty first is your budget informational meeting, which is supposed to be like a potluck type of thing. But maybe if the letter came out in advance of that night, you could also encourage people to attend, you know, the budget information meeting on the thirty first, but.
Forgot about the potluck. I don't know if it was a potluck or can we catering that or?
They talked about being like a potluck like.
Bring some tuna sandwiches.
Finger sandwich.
I know.
These uh, these are pretty good.
No, I like potluck. I think that's a cool idea.
Yeah.
I mean, we'd all have to bring something just to like kick it off and make sure we're not like all bringing brownies. That would be the key.
No entrees, you have to.
You have to bring an entree, yeah.
The hardest.
Wait, is the meeting at seven? The meeting would be at seven?
Can be at whatever time we want, right?
Yeah. If it's that late, we probably. I think we talked about a six to seven supper and then seven o'clock meeting.
Maybe it's a dessert.
Maybe if I.
I was waiting for your meatball.
I like the idea of a six to seven meal and then we, you know, kick into the presentation.
Gets people out there together just talking.
Or even do a six thirty.
Six thirty.
I I even think a six thirty, cause six is very early for some people coming.
It's a seven.
But you do a six thirty, advertise it as a potluck that still encourages people to come for the meal.
Right.
Allow some socialization.
Don't make them think they have to bring something though. Sometimes potluck or um you know, join your board and PTO for.
Yeah, I mean if we rally just like ourselves and maybe some PTO members, we could like.
Have to bring anything, so you have, people have to bring something directly from work and.
We could also do a spaghetti dinner and 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 hire a couple of our child nutrition staff and they'd be able to, I mean, that's pretty simple, you know, we open up the kitchen, we do it. And just give me the green light and I can put that together.
That might be easier. Maybe 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 the potluck part is we bring, you know, dessert.
The dessert. Dessert.
Spaghetti's easy.
Yeah.
And then we also don't have to worry about food safety, which
Kitchen's there to clean up the stuff.
Right, can we have vegetarian option as well?
Yes, yes.
There's no meat in that sauce.
We can't have a gluten free uh ver- well, I guess we could.
So would it, would it get that on the calendar and start planning?
Yeah, I like that.
Wonder how we gauge the volume for this.
We'll have to think about that, yeah.
Fire up another pot of pasta.
Maybe pasta's the meal the next day.
Founders is a sign. Probably sign up, we can do a, you know, call out and just see if there's, you know, we could think about how to.
Or even RSVP or.
You know, there's lots of free services out there to collect RSVPs so we could try to collect RSVPs.
At least it gives sense.
Yeah, and it might give us a sense and then um but not, you know, please RSVP or just come.
Yeah, of course, yeah.
People to subject the field so they shoot, they forgot to RSVP.
And then we could potluck the dessert.
Yeah, we could all bring a dozen or two or something.
If you'd like, bring a dessert.
Now, the other thing, I mentioned, I've mentioned this three years in a row and I've never done it. And so maybe I just need to do it as my, part of my swan song is um what about the idea of doing an online forum uh about the budget? So in other words um from eight thirty to nine thirty, I'm just making this up. Um come to this website and ask your questions about the budget and we sit on the other end and we type and so people don't have to leave their homes.
Yeah.
They can sit there in their PJs, uh they can put the kids to bed and then get on the computer and um they can just get online with members of the board and and chat about, you know, we'd have to have Mark and Ro- Roger like right at our side.
The ESPN's gotten fairly, Harry's been pretty successful with the PG Network meetings online. When I participated in there was a half dozen people.
Right.
What tool does he use for that?
Go to meeting and then something else.
Cause we don't have a paid service but um I'm sure we could find a.
Technology's pretty solid, I mean, you've got a lot of, a lot of.
And I'm not thinking that it would be, uh I mean unless we wanna go this way, like I was thinking it would just, it wouldn't be like an audio. It would purely be like come to this chat room kinda thing.
Okay, so it would just be the typing back and forth? Would it be where somebody could see the whole dialogue going on or would it be individual back and forth?
Be the whole dialogue would just be happening in one big space. I mean unless we can figure out a way to do a short presentation online. And then say now let's open up for questions and people can, and then that's when the chat portion starts.
Sort of like a webinar kind of.
Yeah, like a webinar, exactly.
And the night, but it's not.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's, that's, that's pretty doable.
Yeah.
Okay.
We can explore the idea of a webinar.
Would it be before or after the potluck? Like book, like a day?
Before.
Before.
I think so.
Okay, then before.
But that would be a great thing to include. If you're gonna do that, you put it on the flyer that gets nailed out. So I, that would be ideally.
Do it after.
Because we're, our information meeting is a week and a day ahead and.
Yeah, that's true. Yeah.
And we may not wanna um
Upstage yourselves.
Attendance, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Uh after the public budget information meeting.
Maybe it's a Wednesday night or something or, you know.
Yeah, so um what is, so and then we have the exit poll also as part of the plan. Uh what what else? Anything else besides the ideas that we've just talked about?
Does the library ever let us put up any information there?
I've done, I've done very small group discussions. They ended up being very small group discussions. And I've, they will let us just set up the trifold or they did when Susan Overfield was there so I think I also had it set up last year and I think she had retired by then. It may have been her very last year. She might have retired just after the budget but but I'd be happy to reach out again and see if that's an option. And then um the day that I was there with my little mini muffins and coffee and I made certain to have it be the day, I think there was the day the senior bus typically went. And there were um kids, things going on down in the basement. But it really had, I don't know if one person asked, maybe a couple of people asked me questions and then finally I said, oh, please take the muffins.
I just wonder even having that display there for.
And the display I think was, but I don't think last year I did a sit there, but I think I I did have it set up. They have that table and they let us set it up there and I left um the flyers actually. A few of the flyers there and we might have had an FAQ, single sheet or we might have had something, I think, that we also left there. Um so, you know, that was fine and then I had, I did, I have three boards. That I, when I do them, I do three, so I think we may have done some bus pickups.
Yeah, that's right.
At.
I think we did a before school and an after school.
Maybe, I don't remember doing a before school, but maybe somebody else did that.
I think Ben may have done it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um and the the after school pickup at the elementary school and at Founders and I think I did it maybe the Friday before the vote, maybe the Monday before. And then, oh, the, I mean, I don't think it's a huge deal, but on the door they will tape stuff up. I've sent it out to the principals or the whomever or I've actually just physically dropped them off on bright colored paper.
Right.
Just say don't forget to vote or voting, you know, the hours.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Stick that on the door.
We used to have signs, Mark. Um are those still out there somewhere?
Cause they're one of those closed.
Strategically, no. We do have signs.
Yeah, they used to magically appear before the vote.
We still have some.
Okay.
Um. Those metal. It just says, it just vote, it just says vote, it doesn't say.
Right, it's not pro or con, it's just a reminder to vote.
Last year was the first year I believe that we didn't put them out there.
Yeah, so we might wanna just think about whether or not that's a good tool. We can talk about it later.
And we can see what the weather's like.
Yeah, maybe maybe if the snow melts over.
Sandwich board sometimes, that can be used strategically as well.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
There there was some mild, there was some mild criticism of the of the signs if you recall when we first started serving. As a board member, there were some folks in town who didn't appreciate the, you know, tax dollars being used to
For the sign.
Yeah, even though it was a sort of a neutral, just go and vote, not yea or nay, some people took exception to that, but I don't think that voices as loud now.
Well, it wasn't an outcry, it was, I think of, yeah.
Some folks, yeah.
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 So um so what I'll do as a result of this conversation is I'll I'll update this. Um and it sounds like kind of the big things are uh Kim will tackle the tabletop display and then we'll also begin to work on a, on a schedule of when that will appear. Um I'm gonna dust off the FAQ that we did last time and see if we can just kinda maybe just quickly update it and make it available.
For this year's.
Uh that might be really easy to do.
Yeah.
Um and then I wonder if um uh the two of you might be willing to take on the, excuse me. Uh willing to take on the ec- exit survey or the survey questionnaire piece. And just come to the next meeting with with sort of a proposal uh about um what a survey might look like. With the initial thought of it being the exit survey, but then can we deploy it sooner and get that word out there? Um I will uh investigate the webinar idea. And uh we also have talked about doing a spaghetti dinner slash dessert potluck fest. And I just made that, I made that, I just squished a bunch of words together. So anything else that, uh and also uh reaching out to PTO, Heart and Soul and other groups that might help us just get the word out about the budget um.
There've been a couple of people who work for Essex Town, employees who've come up to me and asked if I would consider with the board to do a a video um of just sort of FAQ video of, you know, sort of a panel type of thing and someone answering, someone asking the panel things about the question, you just sort of in a natural way responding to questions you think might be on and then just post that up on on Facebook.
About the budget or?
Yeah, about the budget.
Oh, interesting.
Um so it wasn't, it wouldn't be a back and forth, it would just be he- here's a straight scoop.
Right, right.
But it would be orchestrated or choreographed in a way that it sounded like it was a live sort of.
Yeah.
Um sort of have a moderator type of thing. Um I thought it wasn't a, it wasn't a bad idea. Um again, as another way to.
Why don't we make the kids a moderator?
If it could be as good as that video we saw tonight at Heart and Soul.
He's so good.
He did a great job.
Really good. I was like, oh, choked up about that commercial.
I know, it's really proud of the community, right?
Yeah, yeah. I think that's a great idea if if.
Little piece of work, we could, you know, take, it was, it's about the board coming in front of the camera and you know, we could have students certainly be part of that by shooting it or whatever, but um something really simple.
Yeah, I like simple and and relatively brief. I think what's hard about on, especially online video is that if it's really long, people just don't tune in. So if it could be like an FAQ version of a video.
Yeah.
Here's what you need to know, kinda thing.
The um, in thinking about the kids and sharing their work, uh will we on the voting day have um
Musical, will there be some musical performances in the part of the UA particular, you know?
Okay, good. Um and that'll happen at the middle school, I assume?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And then um so we may wanna put that on there on voting day, the festival of the arts or something, right? We'll call it something fest like.
It's like a band of jars. Leftover pasta music man.
Um. And.
We'll have something, Kim, yeah.
And um I wonder for the dinner, can we um, cause there's a television in the cafeteria?
Well, that, that would sure.
That's gone. Um I just didn't, can we put up something that displays student work?
Constructive feedback.
See how Kim really changed.
I'm wondering though if we could be running like music and pictures of kids doing stuff. At the potluck, something that, like up on a projector or wherever that is background noises. We've got people sitting there for a half an hour. It'd be great if their bellies were full and they felt really good about the good things happening in our district before they ask us their money questions.
You guys need a town school moderator too, you know that. Steve's, Steve is not gonna be there to lead the annual meet, the meeting on the eighth, plus he's not gonna be orchestrating the support of civil authority work in county, so I don't know what's happening with that but it's not your responsibility to go out and recruit, but it's a shame not to have.
It might be worth talking to Steve though and seeing if he knows if there's somebody willing to do it.
Would do it.
That'd be awesome.
You know, might be, he would be really good and it would be low impact. I know he was kinda feeling, you know, maxed out when he left the board.
Public services commitments.
Job and tales, that means it just that. Well, Steve's around all day on voting day, so it is a day to monitor that, but I don't know what school moderator versus silver voting.
So he's up late with us.
Yeah.
That's that guy.
Yeah.
That's that guy.
Yeah.
Well, you know.
Did it for like fourteen fifteen minutes.
Fun, let me contact Ben and see if I can guilt him into coming back and doing something like that.
This little set great.
Guilt.
I, I, you know.
Anyway, I'm gonna come to board meetings and be cranky.
Just remember guilt was the word to use.
That's my my new role. I'm gonna come and complain about like specific things.
You're so good like my husband.
Alright, so I will, I will, I will go home and summarize homework, I will update the timeline. Um and I'll, and I'll just make sure that we're kind of, everybody's moving along in their own own little things here.
And one of the comments I just have and I just wanna bring out both on my mind, cause one of the things brought up with the whole. And one of the comments I just have, and I just wanna bring out whilst on my mind, 'cause one of the things brought up with the whole Heart and Soul, somebody mentioned about how sometimes it's like presented to you as a done deal.
Right.
And so I I just want us to just keep in mind that at some point it'd be nice if we did something almost to this scale, but in September or October.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Um, again, and I think it might have been talked about, I'm trying to reme- but it's just, that's, and I remember before being involved in the board, you know, back a few years ago, coming to a budget meeting and feeling like, well, why did I go?
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Because there's nothing I can do or say, they can just answer my questions about what's there, but.
It's all done.
I, I can't provide any feedback that would make a difference, was my feeling coming from that.
Yeah.
And maybe we should keep that in mind as we think about, let's see what kind of response we get now when it is around budget.
Yeah.
Um, in terms of attendance, but that'd be an awesome thing for us to think about this summer in terms of community engagement.
Yes.
And we thought we'd go out on revisiting the ends, but, you know, invariably, there will be things coming up over the next couple of months before the legislature's out that will really require our attention and engagement, and I think it might,
Hmm.
we may find that this food lure is worth its weight in gold for the small amount spent and the, you know, in- investment of the gesture of board's time in bringing cookies or whatever it is we do, like, let's, let's not necessarily buy those things, let's have something that we're we're saying thank you to people for someone's work, but, um, we may find that that, that is a way to get folks to engage, um, or we may find that the topics are so big, people will come pouring in, and.
Or maybe the webinar, or, you know, whatever pieces we find that work.
Yeah, that'd be, that's okay, that's a great reminder.
Yeah. Yeah, it is.
A great reminder.
Um, so, I think that's it for that agenda item, um, the other thing we needed to talk about was to just make sure that we were all set with, um, our meeting schedule, so we actually came into this meeting tonight not having another February meeting scheduled, because the the time when we would normally meet, that is the week of vacation. Um, so the question to, uh, members of the board is whether or not you feel like we need a meeting, another meeting in February, or can we pick up on the March tenth, which is our next scheduled meeting?
I feel like if we communicate about the timeline and what actually needs to be done, that communication is happening, I don't think we need to sit down in the room or.
Another meeting, so we don't need a regular, another regular meeting in February?
Vacation. That would be my, unless there's a pack of monitoring reports that I'm not aware of.
I'm looking, I'm not seeing monitoring reports.
There's one in March.
Yeah.
Yeah, but if if.
On the tenth, there's two point six, and on the twenty-fourth, it's four point four, and you said, Mark, we got somebody coming on the twenty-fourth.
I've got Michael Hawke, Director of Statewide Assessment, scheduled for an hour, and I would, I was hoping we could co-host with the PTO to
Mm-hmm.
get, and it isn't debate, to debate Sback, it's to understand what Sback is and what it's not.
That's great.
Mm-hmm.
So, yeah, he's extremely.
And that's on the twenty-fourth?
Good.
Yeah.
Twenty-fourth of March, you did it today.
So that might be less of a regular board meeting, that's more of an engagement opportunity.
Yeah, you know, what I was gonna do is put a draw, a doc out to the board for your questions that you would have for Michael. Uh, I mean, he's got, you know, umpteen slides, but I think we should construct it around any questions you might have, so I'll, I'll get that out this week.
So, would it be like an hour with him, and then we would have a regular board meeting?
Regular board meeting, yeah, only if you're amenable to that.
I think it'd be worthwhile.
So the, um, I'm just looking at the end student outcome stuff, and as we go down, it looks like is it the tenth mark that you were thinking of the kneecap report, or in February, okay.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
So that, that's then, and then one point one progress report, what is that?
Um, remember last fall I showed you the data wall?
Follow-up. Yeah.
Uh, so we're gonna sh- I wanna show you the next, the next assessment window, which we're doing right now, and we're kids, so excited.
Oh, good.
Yeah, it's very exciting.
Oh, good, okay, so that's, and that's what that is.
So I wanna sho- I wanna show that.
What has come out of that work.
That data, the data, that's that small grain size of data.
Okay.
Okay.
And I also saw, I think it was in, uh, a principal's report from the elementary school that, um, kneecap scores for the younger grades are looking really strong.
Yeah, third grade, um, yeah, I put it in my incidentals that, you know, it's taken a couple of years, but, um,
Yep. Good.
Yeah.
Right.
Ten, yeah, it's been, it's been very impressive.
Yeah.
That's great.
That's great, um, okay, so.
Does that, does that translate in general, or is there a correlation?
To how much extra, I don't wanna say special ed, but extra attention the the third graders are needing, do we see correlation, similar drop in that? I don't even sure what I'm asking, is it I, is it a decrease in IEPs, decrease in services needed, decrease in. Yeah, I think what we're s- I think what we saw with incoming classes, kids were more at the text level in English Language Arts than in math, at the standard where they haven't been in the past.
Okay.
So, yes, the corollary is that they require less specialized service, because if I understand the question.
Yeah, yeah.
And I, and I think it's a tribute to the, we're, we're on the, we're, I think we're finally on the same page.
Right.
That's great. There we go.
Yeah, so I'll, so we're, so it sounds like we don't need a meeting, uh, another meeting in February, so our next meeting will be March tenth, but we'll be working hard on the, uh, communication pieces around the budget in the meantime.
So, great, because like any of the involvement we want with the PTO, their next meeting will be March fourth.
March tenth or March fourth.
Tenth.
And so if we wanna do something collaborative with the PTO, we should have a good sense of what that is.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, I was, I saw four here under March, that, that's a typo.
Uh, that's okay. Oh, okay.
Right, great.
So, yeah, so it's March tenth and twenty-fourth, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Second and fourth, okay, sorry, you were saying.
So, just if we want this in collaboration with the PTO.
Yes.
Their next meeting, and the only, it would be March fourth.
Okay.
Um, and so if they want any discussion, I've started just kind of chit-chatting a little bit with Khaki.
Yeah.
In regards to to that, and I know that they're very interested in helping, they're, they're fabulous, I mean, they're, they're really are a great group.
Yeah. Well, um.
Um, but what is it that we would want to ask from them, and is that something that we know, because we'd have to address that before the next meeting?
Um, I think so, I mean, I think that, go ahead.
I just. No, you go.
I was wondering if like you and I went to that meeting, and just had a, and, you know, we were there representing the board, and just talked about,
Mm-hmm.
you know, here are some of the ideas that we're thinking about of how we could collaborate over the next few months around the budget specifically, um, that might be enough.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure, so.
Yeah. Yeah, no, it's good to know that their meeting is on the fourth.
Is it?
Yeah, I would enjoy it if you wanted to.
Monday the third or Tuesday the fourth?
It's usually Tuesday the fourth, they, they've now switched to Tuesday nights, um, and I can touch base with Khaki just to make sure that that is still when they're planning our meeting, but it's usually the first Tuesday of the month.
March fourth.
Um, at six-thirty, and the last couple have been at Khaki's house.
And, um, so I just wanna make sure, because if we're looking to collaborate with them, we might wanna co-host with them the opportunity for the guy coming on Sback, and that'd be the twenty-fourth, and then may want to co-host with them the following Monday night for the
Mm-hmm.
the dessert potluck.
Right.
Yeah.
Part of the the budget information meeting, and do we think that it'll work two Mondays in a row for them?
Mm-hmm. Right.
Do you wanna, does anybody wanna have a preliminary conversation with?
Right.
I can easily have, I mean, between Khaki and Sarah and, um, I know most of the board members, so.
Just check with Khaki. Just see if they feel like that's something, yeah.
Yeah, just go ahead, float that balloon and see.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just say, um, just 'cause it's two nights in a row.
Yeah.
And were we, did we have a plan for childcare on the thirty-first, or the twenty-fourth, or both?
I think we had talked about trying to arrange for some, uh, babysitters on the info- budget information.
Was it gross cap, somebody was, there's some, somebody made a suggestion.
It's four H.
Four H.
Four H.
Cabs and petting zoo.
This is gonna be the best budget vote ever. But there's no chickens.
No chicken, not in Essex Town, zoning does not permit chickens.
No chicken. We're kidding with that.
So babysitting is something we wanna make sure is part of.
What we heard tonight?
What?
Sorry. You can't have two chickens, but you can have a hundred.
Really?
What, what?
Yeah, didn't we hear that from our zoning administrator tonight?
If you have over, what was it, if you have over a hundred, you follow their state agricultural regulations, which supersede the town regulations.
Oh, that's funny.
Which is a lot, yeah. So you can't have two, but you can have a hundred.
Can you have one?
No.
You can't have less than a hundred, you can have over a hundred.
Isn't that wacky?
Wow, honey.
All right, we're drifting, we're drifting. Hold it back.
This is actually part of our conversation that brought up that, are these different groups collaborating?
Oh, my gosh, that's crazy.
So I think we've discussed our next meeting dates, and, uh, is there any other, um, suggestions about future agenda items
Okay.
or any, um, feedback for myself or for Mark, um, before we adjourn for the evening?
Great tiger anymore.
Um.
I guess that's out of my job.
No, we don't need to assign four point four, right, 'cause we'll do it on the tenth.
We'll do, yeah, we'll do it on the tenth, great, so is there a motion to adjourn?
Okay.
A motion to adjourn?
I'll second.
All those in favor, aye, meeting is adjourned, thanks, everybody.